I'm gonna invite our Eisenhower High School students to leave and the pledge.
Hi, prayers to the flag of the United States of America and to the report for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Ms. John.
Here.
Mr. Sharon.
Here.
Dr. Bridges.
Here.
Mr. Jester.
Here.
Ms. Romeo.
Here.
Colonel Waters.
We have special guests tonight.
We do have special guests and for this, I'm gonna ask Ms. Paula Bowen from Eisenhower High School to approach the podium and she's gonna bring some students and we have Mr. Kirchen here and we've got a lot of information on this one, so, but it's very good stuff.
Well, we thank Paula Bowen, my student, and my students this evening, as well as my principal, Charlotte Oats. And so was my department head, Charles Kirchen, since that sounds shy, and some of my students obtained a C grad from the Lawton Public Schools Foundation and we used this grant to take a wonderful trip, fully funded, fully paid, to the Oklahoma City Memorial, National Memorial and Museum and the Oklahoma City Capitol. And many of my students that you see behind me, when I started teaching at Eisenhower, they were nightbreakers and I often talked about the memorial and the significance of it and I said, if I had the money, I would take you and a lot of public schools foundation made that request and made that journey possible. And so, we had a wonderful time and the students learned a lot and I'll just let each of my students tell me their names and all of that.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name's Elena Carter and on the trip first, I didn't really know much about the Oklahoma City Memorial bombing because, you know, nobody really talked about it except for Ms. Bowen, so it was first brought upon me when she talked about it and I didn't know anything about it. So, when we went to the museum, it was just like, you know, seeing it and how, you know, much impacted, you know, a lot of lives during that time, it was almost kind of like 9/11, that's what I, you know, when I think of it, that's what I think about. So, it was just very sad to see all of those lives lost because of, I like to think it's because of the government, but you know, people, you know, they have their, you know, whatever, within the books, but it was really eye-opening to see all of that and, you know, it just, it was like heartwarming and I really enjoyed my time there and I learned a lot.
Hello, my name's Michael Briggs and I really, like, I didn't know much about the memorial because I've never been to Oklahoma before years ago, so I thought it was an enjoyable experience and I thought it was nice to get to see the gates, sensing the times on them. I didn't really know what they meant when I first got there, but it was enjoyable to figure out, like, what it meant and everything and I felt like it was something really important in Oklahoma's history that everyone should get to go see and know about.
Well, the rest of my students, this is Elena Haley, she also went on the trip, Chris Dohohoy, Jacoby Harkey, and this is Kristen Comyn, yes, they also went on the trip. We had a student, he's not with us this evening, his name is Matthew McCallas and as we toured the museum, we came upon this memorial hall with all the plexiglass boxes and the pictures of the heroes is what I refer to them as of that day and so Matthew, there was one picture he was fixated on and I walked away and he came running to me, he goes, Ms. Bowen, Ms. Bowen, Mr. DeMaster and I said, who's Mr. DeMaster, because I don't think he was part of the trip. Mr. DeMaster, he was an Eagle Scout and I said, he was? I said, where is it, where is it, where is it sweetheart? And so, he runs back to the plexiglass box, he says, can you look, see? And he says, I think I wanna donate my Eagle Scout belt buckle and I said, are you sure that's what you wanna do? And he said, yes, he said, I said, call your mother, make sure that it is okay. And so, he called his mother and she said, yes, and we did the necessary paperwork for him to donate that buckle and it sits inside that plexiglass box at the museum. The family of Peter DeMaster heard the story and they gave special permission for that belt buckle, the Eagle Scout buckle that he worked so hard to get, he told me all the hours and days and nights that it took to get that buckle, so, like I said, Matthew's not with us, he is currently in Tennessee and he's a great student, an awesome young man and once again, we just like to thank the Lawton Public Schools Foundation, because this would not have been possible without their support. It was my understanding that they don't normally fund field trips and so, I just wanna say, thank you, thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give these kids something special. Thank you.
Ms. Bowen and her students to stay up there, this isn't done, we're not finished. Mr. Orr, if y'all don't know, there you are, there you are, is with the Boy Scouts. And Mr. Orr, will you explain to us what it means to be an Eagle Scout?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today to recognize Matthew and what I want is to give you a little overview, if you don't know what it is to attain the rank of Eagle. The fact that a boy is an Eagle Scout is always carried with its special significance, not only in scouting, but also as he enters higher education, business or industry and community service. The award is a performance-based achievement, whose standards have been well-maintained over the years. Not every boy who joins the Boy Scout program earns the Eagle rank, only about 5% of those that end scouting earn that rank. This represents more than 2 million scouts who have earned the rank of Eagle since 1912. Nevertheless, the goals of scouting, citizenship and character, development and personal fitness remain important for all scouts, whether or not they attain the Eagle Scout rank. To earn the Eagle Scout rank, a boy must fulfill requirements in the areas of leadership, service, outdoor skills. Although many options are available to demonstrate the proficiency of these areas, a number of specific skills are required to advance through the ranks, the Scout rank, ten foot, second class, first class, Star, Life and then Eagle. To advance, a boy must pass specific tests that are organized by requirements for each of the merit badges. Of the 130 badges available, 21 must be earned to qualify for Eagle Scout. 13 badges are required to include first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communications, cooking, environmental science, personal fitness, personal management, camping and family life. At each of his rank advancements, the boy takes part with a Scoutmaster's conference. He confers an accomplice to help the scout to set goals for himself and align with his individual talents and abilities. At each conference, the Scoutmaster helps him evaluate how well he has accomplished his present goals and then works for setting new goals. Beginning with the Star rank and continuing through Life and Eagle, a scout must demonstrate participation in increasingly more responsible service projects. He also demonstrates leadership skills by holding one or more specific positions of responsibility in his patrol or his troop. Advancement, one of the eight methods by which scouting aims are achieved, has four steps to the award level. First, the scout learns, then the scout is tested, then the scout is reviewed, or the scout is recognized. The final step in the advancement involves presentation of the badge, usually at a ceremony of the entire troop and his parents and friends. Boy Scouts with disabilities may qualify for Eagle Scout rank, each scout must earn as many of their required merit badges as he can. He then submits application for alternate merit badges and his Boy Scouts Council will determine which alternates they will give to him. Boy Scouts were founded in 1910. So on, but it was founded in 1910, it'll be 106 years old this February and I really appreciate being a part of this, thank you.
I think you have something in your pocket, what, Mr. Orr is...
I haven't got it yet.
You haven't got it yet? It's in your coat pocket?
Oh. I'm 81 years old.
What the idea, did East Daffey contacted Mr. Orr after she heard this story and asked Mr. Orr, because he knows all the connections in the Boy Scouts? He has procured a belt buckle to replace Michael.
This is the, this is a bonus, very prized possession by the boys, it's one and I think he'll be very surprised and pleased with.
And so, there's a letter coming from, everybody there signed it, the board signed it and he will be getting that in the mail very soon to replace it and I'm just so proud of him, he wants an Eagle, always an Eagle and he's an Eagle Scout.
I'd like to thank the schools, the schools, I used to be the district executive here after I got out of the Army and the school's participation in the scouting program is very much appreciated. The teachers have 100 million things, but I really got to understand about what the jobs the teachers have, but they always manage to have this because they feel it was an important part of citizenship with these boys and I appreciate that.
Now, y'all may leave, if you want, you're welcome to stay in for the exciting board meeting, but you're free to go if you want. Thank you all for coming and speaking and thank you for representing a lot of public schools so well.
And share their experience with us. I can't go to that memorial without crying, my husband won't even take me anymore.
Yeah, they won't admit it, but me and then we're crying.
Yes. Yes.
Um, I'm Kristen, I used to be a student of Ms. Bowen and I like to say personally, from the bottom of my heart, she is the most amazing teacher ever, like, I look up to her so much, I love her. Like, when we had the opportunity that she said that she wanted to take us on this trip, as high school students, we're like, field trip? We don't go on field trips, like, that's so elementary school. But then, like, she started explaining it to us and we were like, okay, this could be fun, this could be fun and then she was like, there'll be food involved too and we were like, oh, okay, alright, let's go on this trip. And she was like, but y'all, you have to be good though, you know, you gotta be good in class and you gotta work hard and, you know, you gotta work hard for things and when I went on this trip, it really changed a lot in my heart, because, you know, you saw a different side in young people and you actually saw, like, the lives that were lost and you usually would think that young people wouldn't care about stuff like that, but it really, really touched a lot of kids' hearts and I've seen kids that I never thought I would ever see cry at that place and it was just, it was a really, really blessing experience and I couldn't have been, I couldn't have been more blessed to be able to have such a great teacher that was willing to, like, wanted to do this with us. And I just wanna thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Orr, be sure you leave us the buckle. You can't leave with it.
I wanna make sure everybody knows that this was my, this was, this gentleman, Dr. Diggins' idea and I, a pleasure to call him friend and a fellow O'Carrollian and I just appreciate being a part here.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll get that out.
Do we have a departmental report?
We do, in addition to the printed report, which unless you have any questions, I won't go into, we have Mr. Chris Sharkey from the Special Services. And Mr. Sharkey is in charge of what we would consider special education, he'll share what's been going on in the department this year. Who do you be?
I'm Chris Sharkey, I'm the Special Education Director and I appreciate the opportunity just to be able to come and give you a quick update. Special services is involved in so many different things, so, I could take an hour or so to cover that, but I would get ran out of here. So, what I'll do is I'll just give you a quick overview. We service about 2,700 students, there are 2,700 students that own IEP, that's roughly about 18% of the total population of Lawton Public Schools. What we do is we provide various related services and if you look under IDEA, which stands for the Individuals with Disabilities Act, it says related services means transportation and other supportive services that are required to assist a child with a disability. So, what we do is we have numerous related services, they can include transportation and I'll be honest, we work with Transportation Department very closely and very well. I have to say, they do a tremendous job, they transport over 600 special ed students per day and those are ones that require special transportation to get to their school and back home, so we're very thankful for them. We also have a nursing department and the nursing department, while they provide a lot of services for our special needs students, one thing they also do for the, well, several things they do for the district is that they provide assistance for students regardless if they're IEP or not, with diabetes, asthma, flu, anything where there might be a medical issue related, they're involved. In fact, they provide CPR and first aid training for our staff throughout Lawton Public Schools and they do vision and hearing assessments for every pre-K through 5th grade student within Lawton Public Schools, so that, they do a tremendous job at that. We have three staff members that work in physical therapy and with them, they're working with students to help them perform functional activities. Some of our students can't move around, cannot get around and they work with them usually on a weekly basis, but they also assist the teachers and the personal care assistants so they'll continue to work with them throughout the week when they're, when they're working with other students at other schools. We have 13 OTs and they're working with those students mainly on self-help skills, sometimes with visual perception and also things like handwriting, how to hold a pencil, things that we take for granted, they're working with those students so they can be successful in the classroom. We have 13 licensed professional counselors and they're throughout the district. Many of our students, some might have disabilities where the anxiety overcomes them when they get to school or depression does and they can't make it through the day. Our counselors work with them on a regular basis, usually they're meeting with them at least one time a week and how, how they can handle when anxiety does occur or when they get upset, the proper way of handling that. They do a terrific job, but I will also tell you that they're there when those emergencies rise and in case a student has a meltdown, they work with them, help them get past that moment and get back into the classroom so they can continue their learning. We have 31 speech therapists, they deal with 935 students, okay? Now, if you look back on the handout I gave you, it says, Speech Language Impairment 314, that's how many students are actually qualified under Speech Language Impairment category, but they deal with another 600 students that may have qualified for, under the category of specific learning disability, but they also needed speech services as well. So, they do a tremendous job and I have to give them kudos as well, because they are working very closely this year and while they've always worked with the students, they're actually dealing with words that the kids will be seeing when they take the Oklahoma Core Curriculum Test, so it's not something new to them, even though the teachers are working with them, it's so they'll get a better understanding of the word and those are things that they're working with our students throughout the district and it's gonna benefit those 935 students. We have 15 psychologists or psychometrists, what they primarily do is they evaluate our students. There's two reasons they would evaluate, one is a student needs to be reevaluated to see if the student still qualifies for services, maybe he no longer qualifies for services or if the initial evaluation is, they'll take in all the data, they'll evaluate the student and then with their written report and their observations, they'll meet with the IEP team and that IEP team will decide, does the student qualify under a specific category and if so, what are the services they need to provide for that student. We also have a Vision Certified Teacher, that Vision Certified Teacher works with about 20 students throughout the district, those students have some type of a visual impairment and she does a tremendous job with them. Now, those are a lot of the related services that we provide for our students. I will tell you, one of our biggest assets are teachers and our fellow professionals, they do a tremendous job, they work with the students on a daily basis and it can be, a student might be in a self-contained classroom setting where they're with that teacher all day, or it could be where a teacher, I'm sorry, where a student struggles in math and maybe he's in high school and they're with that special ed teacher for that one period, so the teacher can help that student, because that student could be anywhere from three, four, five grade levels behind and they're trying to get him the skills that he needs to be successful. Again, we have some tremendous staff, I know it's a quick overview, but I just wanted to present that to you to give you a little background, if the opportunity rises again, if you'd like to maybe have a presentation from our speech department or our nursing staff, we'd love that, or if there's a specific disability that you might have questions about, we'd love the opportunity to come and present that to you as well. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
We appreciate you very much.
From perspective, 2,700 students means our special ed department is larger than 90% of the school districts in the state. It's a big group, makes sense.
Thank you. Your report?
Under report of the superintendent, I have item A, Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy EFD, Student Travel. Make sure I get to the right page. Very minor changes to that.
This is just to be aligned with the state or...
This really, there are only, there are only two changes and I think they're on the front page, instead of relationship to context and they add cost accessibility and all students are afforded the opportunity to attend, I think it's a more inclusive policy.
Any questions?
I make a motion, approve.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Under item B, we have Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FDCR1, Student Attendance and this one, again, really the effort most on all of these is to clarify and simplify our attendance policies, be changed and the big confusion parents have is, we used to have excused and unexcused absences, now we have verified and unverified by state law and so, really, this is just to simplify, clarify and to make sure we're not being redundant or overly confusing, so, any specific questions? Any specific questions?
One second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Under Item C, we have Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FDCR2, Internal Activities Review Committee. And a lot of, this is the committee that reviews if a student plays football or is an ag and they're out a lot, there's, by state law, we have to review and decide if they can exceed the ten absences, et cetera. This, again, just simplifies the policy because a lot of these elements are redundant in the other areas of the absentee policy.
Mr. Brenner? Second.
Please call the roll.
Jester?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Under Item D, we have Consideration and Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FDCR3, Absences Procedures. And again, this is an effort to just clarify, make it simpler, more sequential for parents to understand, as well as the sites.
I'm going to approve it.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms., Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Okay, and Item E is Consideration of Action Regarding Proposed Revisions to Policy FCE1, Affidavit of Understanding. And this basically lines this up to all the previous changes that we just adopted.
Mr. Brenner? Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Under Item F, we have the information items, just information item on the 2014 bond update. And Dr. Bridges tweeted me a picture, or texted me, not tweeted. I'll never get it to tweet and thing.
I don't know how to tweet, so.
Neither do I, if you're just Ms. Dr. Pope. But she sent me a picture of Isingard High School, they have started the windows, and on the visible side, on the north side of the building. I've got a lot of excitement, and they've run into a couple, one of the things is some of that brick facade that was unable to get behind the windows, so they're having to work with that. And so, started in a little different area than they expected to, but nothing, they're not going to be able to overcome. But the bond, again, and another issue of the bond that just started this week is also the security systems. Mr. Rice and other people have been looking at, they've actually started the installation process.
That's awesome.
Which means they're measuring that sort of thing, so. Always takes longer than I think. Any questions about the bond fund? Actually, I did that backwards. That was the sales tax I was talking about, I'm sorry. On the bond fund, on the bond fund, so I did it backwards, my apologies. I actually discussed Item G on Item F, but on the, regarding the bond fund, it, we just did the final walkthrough, Cruz did, for MacArthur Middle School roof. So I think that's a huge milestone for the district. That was one of the worst roofs in the, without a doubt, in the district. Got rid of the lava rock, so we can, and they, they've done the Eves, they've really done a good job, and happy to say, the last rainstorm, it did not leak in MacArthur Middle School, so. It's a huge improvement. And also, on top of that, the sites are working on both bond and sales tax issues for the grounds, playgrounds, fencing, as well as the next round of what they want for educational materials and supplies. So the sites currently are working on those two things from both funds, so. Any questions on that? And then we have Item H, there's information item, and the first, the most obvious item is Oklahoma State School Boards Association decides that on January is School Board Appreciation Month, and Dr. Pope and all her principals got together and they, they went with a hero theme, apparently. I don't know if that was on purpose. It was on purpose, okay. So, and I want you to know, that is Mr. Jester's actual, actual physique right there.
(laughter)
And the pots and the plants are from, posters are from every school, and the pots and the plants are from the FFA teacher, Lindsay Hobert.
Oh.
And they were grown by the Advanced Horticulture, but those are yours to take home, and Ms. Cordis and helped to line that up with them, and so, and I.
(inaudible).
There you go. So cooperative effort there, so you actually get to take those home, so. So I think that's awesome. I just have a couple of things to update you on besides that. Three stories I wanted you to be aware of. We did receive a $1.2 million Department of Defense grant from our grant department, and it's a military-connected academic support program, an educational grant, and the funds we received in October, but we have just started to actually implement that, and it was just in the paper recently. We were identified as an area of high need, and again, we're focused on STEM, on, as much as we can on these things. I think this one, however, might actually be a reading grant. Yes, improved reading. We also had a story in the paper recently with a MacArthur High School student to be the voice for education. Louis Jackson is on our state, Joy Hofmeister's, state superintendent, Joy Hofmeister's advisory group. So when Joy Hofmeister meets with students and asks them, Lawton has a voice. So Louis, he's actually been here a couple of times.
Yes.
And we've gotten to know Louis pretty well, so. Perfect, perfect representative for Lawton Public Schools, and we will have him come at some point in the semester to share his experience. I think that'll be a great thing. And another story is Lawton Public Schools 2015 Teacher of the Year Award, and Cameron University has named Willland Hills kindergarten teacher Cheryl Tate as one of three persons slated to receive the 2016 University Distinguished Alumni Award. And if you, again, great selection. Now, I have one thing that I want you to pass down, but you have to give it back because it has to go to Lincoln School. We received this in the mail the other day, and it's a letter. Somebody had found this at an antique shop, and it's a 1929 picture of Lincoln Elementary School. So that is, again, we, I'm going to commit, I haven't told Lincoln about it because they probably wouldn't let me have it this long. But we're going to get that out to Lincoln and let them have that and put it in their display case.
That's neat.
Lincoln.
(inaudible).
An antique store, yeah, it was found in an antique store in California. Thank you to them. And made it all the way here. I don't think the person even knew who we, had any connection to Lawton. They just sent it.
(inaudible) decided to send it.
Yep.
That's really incredible.
I'm going to write them a letter of appreciation.
Maybe we can have the kids write him a letter.
That's an even better idea. That's awesome. We will do that. This was also in the paper, on January 5th, we received a letter from the McMahon Foundation. The McMahon Foundation donated $383,000 to Lawton Public Schools for two things. One is to update our science labs in our middle schools and our high schools, and that's incredibly excited, exciting. That just covers our middle schools and our high schools, but also, they donate enough money to complete LCD projectors in every classroom of our school district.
Wow.
That will complete, because the LCD projector, it's not only replaced the chalkboard of old, it has replaced everything. It is the portal to everything in the classroom, and so, we haven't had enough, they donated not only the projectors, the mounts, but also the labor to have the electrical installed because, to get it installed in a timely manner, so.
(inaudible).
Very, very good.
(laughter)
I have complete, complete faith in them, but that is, that's all my announcements. That's the best part of the board meeting, I think. Any questions?
I just will say, thank you for the posters tonight, especially that.
I did say that was all the announcements, but I have one thing you need to see. You've got to see in addition to that. I'm going to brag on Ms. Ellis and Mr. Wade. This is just, if you get, I pay an extra, and I think we have to pass one all the way down to Kathy and everybody else. But you've heard about workers' comp and the incredible work, Ms. Ellis shared early in the year, the incredible difference in just the last couple of years that the district has made. I mean, at that point, we shared how the workers' comp had gone down to $2,400 at one point, our first, second quarter this year, from averages of 13, 19, 28, even $40,000. But the graphs here, as you can see, Lawton Public Schools has gone down in every, just about every measurable way. That's thanks to the incredible work of all of our staff, but primarily, Ms. Ellis and the Safety Committee. Just incredible work that's saving the district real funds, and it's also making our district safer, so.
Right.
It's incredible information, give Ms. Ellis some. Anything you'd like to add to that, Ms. Ellis?
Mr. Brenner?
You want to add anything to that?
The only thing that I've been at is, we've received this information in a summer from the Oklahoma School Insurance Group, comparing the Oklahoma standards to the national standards. Well, you know how I am, I want to know, how does Lawton compare to every other school district in Oklahoma? And that's why I thought that information was very enlightening, because it gives you the opportunity to see that we are working diligently on our safety committee and our safety programs, and we are seeing progress with regard to the savings that are occurring in our district, but not only that, our employees are safer because of it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Now I'm finished. Apologize.
Does anyone have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like Page 36, please.
Page 36.
Do we approve the rest? Anyone come back to it?
Yes. Would anyone like to make them, are there any other questions? We can go ahead and approve. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the remaining part of consent agenda?
I'd like a motion to approve all of the consent agenda except the items listed on Page 36.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
I need some clarification and then a couple of questions regarding the Freedom Elementary and Item Number Two. First off, I take it if it's made to the Treasury of the United States that the electric bill is paid to Fort Sill or to the government, that we don't have a separate PSO line that goes to them first? Is that, is that what the check is for?
Yeah, that's kind of confusing. Once we take full possession of the building, right now, everything is working through the Washington, the grant process, and so, it is kind of confusing that we have to pay the Treasury of the United States. We're, everything going through the grant process, so all of our bills are filtered through them, and once we get the full building and take full possession, then everything will be a little more recognizable. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it's just, and the simple truth is, electricity has been a lot more expensive out there than we anticipated. It is a LEED certified building, which means it's supposed to be incredibly energy efficient, but right now, we have one end of the building that's still being constructed, incredible amount of electrical equipment, so it's just turned out to be a lot more expensive. We've had, Mr. Smith has had the electricians go out and looked at it. We won't be able to, when we get the building done, then we'll be able to have a better idea of control on the actual, just the heating and cooling of the building. Right now, we're running everything else in the world for construction as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because that was my biggest question, because before this building was built, it was supposed, we paid extra money for it to be green, energy efficient, we're supposed to have this solar stuff where it cuts down on the lighting bill, cuts down on the heating, because we're supposed to have the heat from under the ground, all of these resources, and then when we have a bump up, I just, do you know when we can really nail that down as far as what, if there is a problem, and, because, you know, this, if that continues, there will be a clearing.
Is this for about $100,000?
No, no, that's.
No, that's just for the rest of the year, the finish of the year.
Okay, okay.
What I anticipate, it'll be finished, you know, they've told us it'll be completely finished by April 1st, we think. We'll have the, construction will be complete, and then we'll be able to actually start the building, just running the building. And so, costs should go down significantly at that point. It's also a matter of that building being incredibly, there's two other factors. One, the system, it takes a while to find, to get the system tuned and make sure we're, because it is so efficient. The other thing is, I think the hallway turned out to be a little bit of a wild card. If you think about it, we've got a hallway that connects those five buildings that's, I think it's 25 feet long. It's a full 40 to 50 feet tall and 800 feet long. If you think about it, that's as much square footage as a football field. So that has got to be factored in. I think that's been a little bit of a wild card. That's a huge amount of area to heat and cool, and so, I think, once we get the building complete and get into it, where we're no longer building things and pouring concrete, I think it'll be a lot easier thing to determine exactly where those funds.
Would that be an architect's question? Because aren't they supposed to, I don't know, architect, but I mean, they use the usable space, and then they look at all of that as far as costs, aren't they?
It would be, yes. And again, once we get it finished, we hope to be able to nail down exactly where they are.
Okay. Is some of that, is some of that energy loss due to the heat in there because of the building that they're building on? I mean, is it, is it closed off, or somewhat open?
It's, well, it's just like any other, you know, any other construction project, you know.
Just come from, plastic.
Right. And they've got a, they've got a temporary wall in between the old section, or the old section, the current section, the section everybody's using right now, and the new section of the building, which is being built. Once that is torn down and the buildings are joined, we'll have a, we'll have, finally have the building open and be able to mitigate and understand.
Is there a target date on that, on what they think they could complete?
They believe it'll, it'll be finished. We're going to be able to, I think, April 1st, they'll be completely out, completely done. They were pouring the concrete for the pre-K drop-off just the other day, last time I was there. So they're progressing pretty well. But again, even the pre-K center is bigger than a lot, well, most of our elementary schools. It's a big, it's a huge building.
So if afterwards, if we still have a much larger than anticipated energy bill, I guess we can go back to the architects and say, hey, boys, let's get this fixed.
Yeah, hopefully, but it is a very, it's, that's a big space to fill. I don't know if that's taken everybody's surprise. I really, again, at this point, my understanding, it is the construction, coupled with students being in the building, we didn't have that last year, we just had construction. Now we're heating, we're cooling, we're using it for a lot of Saturday events too, on Fort Sill.
So was the initial bill built based on last year's numbers? Is that how we came up with the original purchase order, math?
Well, since the building was new, it was kind of a guess.
Okay.
You know? Yeah, because we've never had the building fully open. You know, God willing, we're going to get this, that's an expensive building to run. But we also have to remember that it's as big as Lawton High School. It, essentially the size of five elementary schools. So, once you get it and we get all the construct, I think it will be in line and be comparable, so.
Then back to the original question, then when we take ownership, then we just have like a PSO bill, we won't go through the US Treasury then?
Right. My understanding right now, we have to pay everything through them, because they're, every penny has to go through them at the moment, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, Ms. Brenner, I didn't know you were here. Help me.
No, we have always, sorry, we have always paid the bills for Sheridan Road and Drummel Road to the US Treasury.
Okay.
They are connected somehow to Fort Sill, and we are billed from them, and we have always paid them.
Okay, so that will always continue?
That will always be, all utilities. In regard to what Mrs. John asked, yes, in that instance, when we put on the original purchase orders, we put them on, we put them on and get them to the board in June, for to set on July 1st, all standings. So at that point, we hadn't had any bills from the building freedom itself, so we elected to put it on just the way we had done it in the past. So we started to get the bills, say, August, September, October, but they're always a couple of months behind getting us the bills, so I didn't even have an opportunity to even get, you know, I have a spreadsheet that kind of estimates it based on what we've paid from year to year. In November, December was when we first started to get the bills, so then I tried to get an estimate as to where we would be to finish this school year out. I'm hoping that once we get some more into, you know, heating, cooling, those sorts of things, it will kind of all balance itself out.
And thank you for pulling it up, because that's a big issue.
I'll make a motion to approve page thirty-six of the consent agenda.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
All right, we need an executive session this evening?
I believe we do.
Okay.
Make a motion to go on to executive session.
Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Sharon?
Yes.
Dr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
I'm going to grab the envelope and the-